Okay, so let's call the meeting to order. It is November 18th, 4:36, and we'll take roll call. So Heidi, Heidi Drawn, and I'm by myself in a room at my house. Oh, Mommy, I think you're on mute.
Correct. Good thing I talked about it downtown. Mommy, I am by myself in my room as well.
And then we have, I think, Monique.
Hi, yes, I'm in my classroom with my two children, younger than seven.
And then who do we have physically?
So hi, I'm Jeff Prossen, the community director for the first time. I remember a big mission for me to be here and watch you guys.
Great. Okay, so we have quorum, so we'll go ahead and get started. The first thing on our agenda is, let's see. I do want to kind of have move the Talking is Teaching up because Heidi Allen Castor needs to leave at 3 o'clock. Is that okay with everybody? Okay, okay, so we're going to let her share some materials of the posters. So Heidi, if you can share that, that would be great.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I don't know what's going on with my camera, but I'm just gonna share screen, is that okay?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I made a lot of different styles, let me choose.
So these, so just to give a quick little background to the commissioners, these are the posters that we would be displaying on the bus. So Heidi gave us a few samples to look at.
Okay, I can make it bigger. I'll just slowly kind of run through it. So this is poster one, let's talk about the bus. They're all be in size 11 by 28, which is what they specified. It includes a protective factor on the bottom and then the logos. So that's style number one. And I can share this so you guys can go over it more if you'd like. Then number two, let's talk about the community. They all have kind of the same format, just including a different protective factor. But so you could kind of choose which ones you like. Let's talk about what makes you unique. So they all include like prompts. If parents don't know what to say with their children, then they could just talk about that in the images they see. I'm just gonna run through them. So let's talk about color is one. They all would include a different protective factor. Let's talk about play, I wanted to include, okay, the next one. Let's talk about grandparents, sorry, this one is still loading. And then just for some context, everybody knows. So the images, the colors, the fonts and everything, it was made by the National Initiative. It is actually purposely created with the way young children's minds process things. So the spacing, like it's all really intentional, the way that they make it, the way the images are like bubbly. So let's talk about numbers. I wanted to include one that doesn't include a protection factor definition at the bottom and just the logos, so you can see the difference. It would have, it would be bigger, so people in the back of the bus could see it. But so that's what it looks like without the definition. And then the last one is, let's talk about rain. So I wanted to include as many as I could, so that you could see. And then let me just go back up to the, let's talk about the bus, because I think that definitely would be one that's the most fitting in the bus. So they could talk about that whole adventure. But those are the style samples. I can share it, I can add you on it, Heidi, so you guys can go through it and maybe vote on ones that you think we should move forward with, like printing and going through when you get to that stage. But yes, that's, those are the styles.
That's awesome, thank you so much. So these are the commissioners, these are the posters that we're gonna like look over. So Heidi, yes, if you can email that to me, so that I can send it out to the commissioners. They can take their time to look at it and then we can vote on it. But and Kaena just said something on, in the chat, I believe. Is there a way that the posters can get changed out after a certain time period? So that's a good question. So I think we'd have to work with Department of Transportation on that one too, because there's a certain timeframe that the posters can be up and we do need to ask if we can change out the posters. Well, first of all, does anybody, commissioners, does anybody have questions for Heidi before she has to go to her 3 o'clock meeting? Yes. I'm gonna go into that. We'll, we'll, we'll talk about that. But is there any questions specifically about the posters that Heidi chose or anything like that? So. Okay, so let me just, sorry, Brian, can, I can't really hear you that well. Yeah, they are, they are appropriate. So the whole, so our commission took this on to kind of get behind, because we wanted to be more of a help in our community. And one of the ways we had talked about was trying to put these posters on the bus. And so one of the things we did was we, you know, from our last commission is we wrote a letter to Department of Transportation. And then I believe Mark is the one that gave the specific parameters about the size and that they're need, they needed to be in kind of like a, there needed to be fasteners. So anyway, I went and had a meeting with Heidi and also with Deb at Ho'oua Kika. We did a little WebEx meeting to talk more about the roles and responsibilities. And one of the things we do need to find out is, does the bus have the fasteners? Or do, do, do those need to be purchased to hold the folder, the posters? And then one of them was, can the posters be reused after being removed? And making sure that it, you know, I know Mark had said that Ace Printing was the one that had, that does stuff for them. So we were gonna look at that, but also looking at the cost. So I think we had talked that it might be like $20 per poster. And one of the things we want to talk about is, another thing we want to talk about is like the funding of that and then getting everybody who, like, so getting our collaborators that are behind this initiative. Originally, you know, I think we thought that, oh, you know, Heidi would just go and, and put up the posters, but maybe we could do more of a group effort. And you know, once we get this all going and underway and everything gets approved and we vote on it and everything, we would maybe do like a press release and then choose a day and meet with the rest of the, our partners, which would be Ho'oua Kika, Maui Family Support Group, us, and help put the posters on, on the buses. And I don't know how many buses and that, that's one of the reasons why we kind of all need to have a meeting with, with Department of Transportation, kind of iron out those ideas. But we kind of needed to kind of show you the posters and show you what, what the next steps are that are involved. So how, how is the commissioner's feeling so far?
Can you hear me? If you can hear me, I was under the impression that the cost would be covered by Heidi Allen Castor's organization. And why is that not?
So when I had the meeting with Heidi and Deb, I did, I guess I didn't look like that, I was under the impression of that too, because we had asked. But they are asking if there's a way for the commission to help figure out the funding for that. So we, you know, we can talk about it, see if there's some creative ways. I don't know if our budget, we do have a little bit of a budget, but I don't know if it would cover all of it. So that is, that is a question that we would need to kind of iron out in our commission meeting. And if it's something that our, is, I don't know if it's something that our commission can move up to the mayor's office and ask for funding from them to help get this going. But whatever way our commission is going to be moving forward, we need to make sure we go through the proper channels and proper procedure.
Yeah, okay, quick question. So we're looking for funding to do, to reproduce the full, the posters and to do the fasteners?
Well, I, no, I'm not sure about the fasteners. So that's one of the reasons why we, I'm gonna be doing a meeting with Department of Transportation and inviting, making sure that Ho'oua Kika is there and Heidi, Heidi is there. And obviously, you know, Jessica, if she can be there, so that we can make sure that we kind of are on the same page, but at the same time also making sure that everybody's hearing the same information. Because I, I'm not sure, I don't know if the bus already has fasteners or things in place or if that's gonna be another cost that's gonna be part of this.
So we look at the cost per bus, right?
Well, so we would need about, yeah, it's about 70, about 70 posters, because Mark had suggested that we make extra in case they get damaged or something happens. And so we don't really know if it costs $20. We were just making a guesstimate, but we would need to contact Ace to make sure, you know, to see what the cost is or if there's another printing company that can be utilized that's less. And, you know, sometimes just talking to the printing companies, sometimes they might comp, you know, make, give us a deal because it's for a community project. And so that can also be explored, which I don't mind exploring. And also there's, if we do, if, you know, let's, let's say if there is a cost, you know, that, I don't know if the commission can look at, seeing if there's different businesses or any, any, you know, like getting donations to help cover the cost, you know, because it's a community thing. And I don't know if that's appropriate for our commission, so I kind of would have to make sure it's, you know, with Core Counsel, that's, that's an appropriate way to do things, because I'm not really quite sure.
I agree, I agree.
Comment from Brian?
Yeah, go ahead, Brian.
Okay, in addition to the cost per poster, $20, approximately $20. Every time I see a poster or an advertisement on a bus anywhere, there's a frame around it of some sort, and usually a piece of plexiglass that will be on top of that. Plexiglass is costly, the frames are costly, the poster must be made to the size of a available frame. Then it now has to be installed. You add all these pieces together, they're coming up with some dollars, folks.
Well, I think that's why we need, yeah, we need to have the meeting with the depart, with Mark at Department of Transportation to ask him if they have, if they have the plexiglass and the fasteners and all that and we don't have to, and we just have to worry about the printing of the posters, that would help save, right? So we don't know, so we need to kind of meet with them. But you're right, if, if we have to do, if we have to purchase that, that would be, that would increase the cost quite a lot too.
Yeah, I think we need to get more information before we can decide as a commission, first of all, if our budget can handle it and secondly, if we can actually go out and solicit financial assistance. But I think we could make those decisions after your meetings so that we have a better idea of what we're talking about as far as costs.
And we were looking, yes, and so, but first I had to kind of just mention to, you know, like let you guys know and see if it's something that we want to move forward with. So do we want to move forward with the meeting with Department of Transportation to get these kind of questions answered more? So I wanted to present it to the commissioners first and we kind of need to, I think, I believe, vote on it, is that, is that correct? Is, that's our next step?
Yeah.
So.
I think Kaena needs to say something, Kaena has her hand raised.
Okay, Kaena?
Let's make a motion then.
Well, I think Kaena was gonna say something, but there you go.
Trying to get used to this buttons. Anyways, what I was gonna say is that it might be worthwhile for the commission to ask or inquire about the budget process and what and how you folks can look for funding simultaneously as you folks explore this mission. Because I do know that even if it's just printing of the posters, the commission's budget won't be able to even fund that at the $20 times the 70 posters. So, but it would be good, because a lot of the commissioners are new to that, to understand what the county budget process is, so that when things like this come up, you folks have an understanding of what you might be looking for and how you might be an advocate rather than a, this is a, something that the commission is actually implementing. So however or whoever we can ask for a mini, you know, demonstration of what the county process is for budgeting, I think will help with future things that come up like this.
So who, do you know who you asked, Kaena?
I can get back to you on that. My thinking is that we would ask budget office, the budget office, but we also have to be cognizant of where they're at in their cycle for if they would be able to give us that or if somebody, one of us could, you know, figure it out enough to help you folks along with that. So I, I would need to do some questioning on it, just so that I have a better understanding of who the right person to get, the commissions as a whole, to understand budget processing is. But I would suggest we put in the ask for it.
And is the commission allowed to go solicit, I guess, or ask for donations for, for this type of a project? Because I do have contacts that would be willing to, you know, you know, fund it monetarily?
I would defer to Corp Counsel. Let's ask Corp Counsel what the parameters are on that. And then secondly, it may be taking the approach of linking with the, the Ho'oua Kika partnership and see if the donation might go through that route versus through the commission's route.
Right.
I would defer to Corp Counsel to give us more guidance on that, because I'm not expert knowledge in that area.
So Caleb, do you have, do you, do you know the answer to that?
Hi, I, I actually don't have an answer for you off the top of my head. You know, in, in addition to the issue of potentially trying to find donations for it, we also have to consider that you guys are subject to the procurement code. I believe that there is an exception for printing, but I'm, I'm, I would have to double check on that for you and potentially follow up with you, Kari, when she gets back.
Okay. Okay, so Caleb, would we need to make a motion to go to the next step, which is schedule a meeting with DOT and the rest, and rest of the partners that are one, that are behind the, the Talking is Teaching campaign?
I don't think you need to take a motion. However, you know, I would advise you guys that pursuant to the Sunshine Law, you guys have, or you guys aren't allowed to kind of meet outside of a public meeting. So it would have to really be one, one member unless you guys want to, you know, create a temporary investigative group, which I can help you with, but we're not gonna be able to do it at this, at this particular meeting. But yeah, as long as it's not more, more than, more than one of you, or I guess it could be two, as long as you guys aren't, you know, committing to, you know, take any official action, one way or the other.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, I think what we'll do is continue, like I've been meeting with Deb and then Heidi Allen Castor. So the Deb and myself and Heidi Allen Castor and then we would request a meeting with Mark at DOT and then Jessica, if she's available, and work, if that's okay with the rest of the commissioners? And then bring back the information. Is that acceptable with the rest of the commission? And then that would give us a little bit more clarity.
Yeah, I think the budget, I mean, I made a good point about the budget or consulting with the budget people, because I would hate for this to take up all of our budget without knowing, especially because we were under the impression that it was gonna be provided.
Yeah.
Provided all.
Right.
But I just, Kaena, in for like what she said about, maybe they could do the fundraising.
Well, and if, if, if it's like, well, and I do know that we're, you know, the timeframe that we're looking at is after the new year. So it's not like we're trying to get this all in a rush and do it by next month. So, because it's, there's a little too much going on right now. So that does give us time to find the answers. But if it was like, if it was coming down to, you know, if it's, if we can, I, I would prefer to do like solicit from donors, because I do have a list of people that do want to privately donate to certain things like this. And so I'm pretty sure we, I could get enough donors to cover the cost, but they would have to know what the amount is. And right now, we don't have an amount that we could tell them that we, this is the amount that we need. So, because I, I feel like, you know, I mean, we still definitely need to learn about the budget process and everything like that for future, but I feel like that, that might, if, you know, delay us in moving forward. So, so if, if it came down to, to that, then I would hopefully, we can find, Caleb can get the answer to us about, you know, asking for donations or having it go through Ho'oua Kika to, to start the movement for getting these posters made and stuff. All right, so does anybody have any more questions in regards to, because the next step for the Talking is Teaching is gonna be setting up that meeting and then we'll get more specific answers with Department of Transportation. Is anybody else having more questions about the Talking is Teaching?
I have another suggestion for us with this. So this could be a good opportunity and learning point for the commission. Another way to look at helping advocate for campaigns like this or this campaign is to help Ho'oua Kika better define their process in what it might be to engage entities to help get that distribution out. So, you know, so all of the things that you're going through right now, Heidi, work with Ho'oua Kika to kind of get that, it's kind of locked in in a process so that if they go ahead and approach a business, this is they say what it is and how you might donate to it. And or if they give you a package so that you folks, if we're not directly putting these posters on the bus, the other thing with the expertise or the well-roundedness of the commission is that you may have resources that you could present the, hey, here's how you can invest in getting the word out on a campaign called Talking is Teaching. But if Ho'oua Kika has that process, I'm sorry that Heidi has left before this entered my brain, but if that, if the commission helps Ho'oua Kika or others, right, come out with what their process is, it can spread the effort a lot larger than, than just, right now with what we're starting with is on the buses, right? We can go for the buses, we now know that they have it costed out, we now know that they have it, you know, who you might want to contact and what the steps might be to get the permissions. And then that can be through Ho'oua Kika's effort and the commissioners on their own, you know, expanding it to others who might want to invest and support campaigns such as this or this one. So just a thought on documenting the process, so that it can go farther and the impact of the commission is that much more meaningful.
Right, so when we were, when I had my meeting with them, you know, Deb's, Deb's vision was to have the different community partners gather, like, you know, once we find out all the information from Department of Transportation, like, and we fight, and we get everything in place, is to do a press release announcing that all these different community partners are coming together to put the posters on the buses and it be a big, like festive type of a thing and show, you know, and shows the collaboration between all the community partners. And then eventually, you know, like we, she, we want to move the, we want to do larger posters for like community centers, grocery stores, in the mall and stuff. So that's, that's kind of where it's going, is headed in that direction. So we don't want to really just stop at the buses, but the buses, at least it's a starting point. So all the commissioners feel, have any questions so far about what we're talking about, about this topic?
And Chair, if I, if I may, I am able to confirm that the, the type of printing that you guys are envisioning is exempt from the procurement code. So I, I, I still don't have an answer about soliciting donations, but that, that at least makes it, it does make it a considerably easier process.
Okay, awesome, so. And then you would find out more about the soliciting, like, like asking for donations or like, 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 let's just say somebody comes up to me and says, hey, I heard you on the commission and I, I found out that you guys are kind of trying to get this thing off the ground, putting these posters on the bus. How, I'd like to pay for the printing of that. So would I say, well, you can make a donation through Ho'oua Kika to specify that it's going towards that? Or what would, you know, or what would I say? Or like, how would I direct them?
I, I would have to get back to you on that. My, my recommendation would be for the department to send a request for legal services to our office on the issue of the ability of a board of commission to solicit donations for, for something of this nature.
Right, I mean, it's one thing if someone comes up and, and says, hey, I'm willing and, you know, they're volunteering it, but am I allowed to talk to somebody about it? Say, hey, would you be interested, you know?
Right.
So there's two, two things going on that I would want to make sure that we're not doing anything that's gonna compromise our commission.
Right, yeah, no, I'm understood. Again, I, you know, I can't answer that off the top of my head, but that is something that we can research into for you guys.
Okay, do you think we would have the answer by the next commission meeting in December?
Well, potentially, you know, Yukari will be back, you know, she's only gone for a week. I'm assuming that this is gonna be assigned to her. You know, it's not a super complicated issue, so I think she probably would be able to get back to you guys on something.
Okay, awesome. All right, so it, I'm super excited that we're kind of moving along and that we have kind of like a little timeframe that we're looking at, that we're working towards. I feel like there's, every time we talk, do, try, talk about this topic that we're getting closer and closer to the end game of what we want to see. So does any of the other, any of the other commissioners have any thoughts or any questions or any concerns about this?
Yeah.
Okay, so what I'll do is, is there any public testimony in regards to this topic? No, okay, so we'll move back to kind of going in order now that, now. So the next thing is that we need to do is the approval of minutes on the September 17th. So the next thing is that we need to do is the approval of minutes on the September sixteenth minutes. Did everybody get to look at those, and, and can we approve those?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the September sixteenth Commission on Children and Youth Meeting.
I think Brian seconded it.
Perfect.
Great, I saw your hand up. Thanks, Brian. Is there any public testimony on the approval of minutes? Nope. Okay. So the next thing on our thing is update on community events. So, so follow up on a letter sent to the county of Maui mayor's office in regards to highlighting CCY meeting events on the county's social media. So did you have anything else to report on that, Erica? No?
Oh, I know. Sorry.
Okay. I know that there was a little, I, I think from our last meeting, I know it's, we didn't meet last month, so it's kind of hard to remember, but I think there was something else you were gonna check out or something like that, was that right?
Yeah, I'm looking now, but I can't. Chair, Jessica, can I comment on this? Okay, so the mayor's office communication team is receptive, I believe, in general to receiving information on events that this commission might be attending or supporting, and sponsoring possibly, but they do need quite a bit of time from the commission to make those requests, because they do rather relatively small a lot of different topics.
So for example, if we were gonna do the Talking is Teaching, if all of us were gonna meet to help put those, that would be something I would want to see on the social media page, but they would need a lot of advance notice of when that was gonna be, is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing you saying?
Yes, so for example, if the commission wanted to move the Talking is Teaching poster campaign forward in action by the commission, the commission could craft and authorize a press release to be shared with the communications office, or is that complication consideration?
Yeah, my thing was, I just wanted this commission, like, monthly meetings to be posted onto the social media. Like how, like, water, like, the other commissions are. That's.
Okay, that's awesome.
Yeah, but I'm, wait, Rayanne had sent me, said that there was a communication back on the communications department, but I don't remember receiving that, or I haven't seen it. Like, I have a, the only email I have is like a response from Rayanne to Lay, but it didn't actually have Lay's response to me.
Are, are you, are you able to reach out to Lay and ask? Or is that something that has to be done through, like, now Vanessa, because Vanessa's taking Rayanne's place?
Chair, this is Jessica again. It would probably be best for that community to talk across the so perhaps Erica can report what you have with Vanessa, and she and I can work across. Okay, yeah.
Okay, was there any questions, concerns in, in regards to that, from any of the commissioners? Okay, if not, then is there any public testimony in regards to that item? Okay, I don't think so. The next one was to see the list of other events in the community. So did everybody get the December and November community events? That was given out, I'm looking for it right now. Here's December's, I'm gonna pull up. So that included things like the Waldorf, Waldorf School Holiday Affair, there's a Nutcracker thing going on, the Hui Holidays, and I think there was something in November, too, events on, oh, events on Maui in November, was Made in Maui County Festival, Farmer's Market, Christmas in November, Kula Harvest, Kula School Harvest Festival, the Maui Butterfly Farm Tour, which I've heard from people is really, really good. So just wanted to kind of keep us updated on events that are going on in Maui, so that we're aware. Does anybody have any questions or concerns on that, or anything else to add of any other community events that you feel like we might need to be aware of? Okay, so is there any public testimony in that item? If there's not, we'll move on.
Done, Chair.
Okay, so we did the Talking is Teaching, so I don't feel like we need to talk about that, because we moved that up to the front. So the next one is, is develop commission activities that align with the commission's goals and priorities. So I think we, we keep that on there, just to keep in mind that we have items that would fall under that, that we would want to talk about. So one of them is a status update on the surveys, so that is my big downfall. Like, I have still not got that out to Mommy and our Lahaina girl to send out to you folks, so that we can take a practice. So I'll, I'll work on that. I'm so sorry. So I've, I've been so busy doing other stuff, so I will do better on that. So December, hopefully, we'll have an answer on that one. Any public testimony in regards to our survey for the community? Okay. The other one is the new business that we've been wanting to talk about is the school bus transportation. Commissioners, do you guys have any questions, concerns? Is this something that we feel like is, that we can help out with, or what are your guys' thoughts? Or has it been resolved? The school bus issue been resolved? I know it's been on our agenda.
Yeah, I heard that it is eighty-three percent resolved.
Okay.
They said that we should be close to ninety percent next week.
Okay, awesome. So kind of resolved herself without us doing anything.
Kind of nice.
So, all right, awesome. Is there any public testimony in regards to that issue?
Where the Piaia School has adequate bus drivers.
What was that, Brian?
Piaia School has adequate bus drivers.
Oh, good.
Right there.
Okay. Okay. Is there any other concerns or any other issues or questions that you guys want answered, or? Okay.
None from me.
Okay. Okay, if not, then we kind of did our business pretty good, I think. So, wow, I'm impressed. So did everybody get also the draft of the upcoming meetings that were for? Okay, so I, I believe our next meeting, Vanessa, is it on December sixteenth? Okay, so that one will be, hopefully, we'll be able to do some more work on the Talking is Teaching and get more answers for you guys. And other than that, I guess we can adjourn our meeting if everybody's okay with that.
Heidi, are you open to taking an agenda items for future meetings?
Oh, yes, yeah, totally.
Okay, I have one if, well, well, when it's my turn, you let me know.
Yep, it's your turn.
Okay, so I just wanted to bring to I muted myself. I wanted to bring to the commission's attention Bill one forty-five. It is a property tax exemption for childcare providers. It had not been increased since, I believe, nineteen ninety-seven, and then there was a proposal to, from, to increase it from fifty thousand dollars to a hundred thousand dollars. And now, I don't know where it's at, but within committees to kind of watch it, they have increased that from one hundred thousand dollars to two hundred thousand dollars to give our childcare providers a property tax exemption. So that's a really good thing. And so if you folks have opportunity to support that in any of the nature of your conversations, or county did a really good job advocating that at the various levels. So it's something to pay attention for. Again, that was bill number one forty-five. And I can give you folks more information on that if you want. Civil Beat did an article about it in, on, when was this? November fourth? So if you want to look up the Civil Beat article, it's titled Maui Council May Double Down on Mayor's Tax Relief Proposal for, for Daycares.
Okay.
And then through another project, this is just a heads up, but we'll put it on to a, on to the agenda for next, is that there are, one, maybe two, family engagement surveys from the early childhood sector that may be being distributed throughout our county. So if I get on the next agenda, I will have a better information to share on it. Those are two that are, and then preschool open doors, again, I just want to make that as an announcement to continue to advocate for all families that are eligible for preschool open doors. So that's three and four-year-olds that are attending a community-based preschool. Quarters should be eligible, so a quarter should apply. Thank you.
Yep, thanks, thanks, Kaina. Does anybody else have things to put on the agenda for next, for next commission meeting? Okay, so one thing that we can all do is we can look up and kind of research Kaina's, what Kaina had said about Bill one forty-five, and read the Civil Beat in regards to that. And then we can discuss it more, I guess, when we have our next meeting. So if there's nothing else, then we can. What is that, Brian?
It's that the bill is the state administration or county.
That's a county. It's a county bill.
All right, if there's nothing else, we can adjourn the meeting at, is it four? Wait, sorry, I'm in, I'm on the mainland, so I'm two hours ahead, or two hours, yeah, two hours ahead of you guys. So it is, is it three eighteen? Okay. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody. Okay, I'll see you guys in December.